Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Rule call, please.
Mayor Baspus?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Talentino?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy?
Here. Okay, we're all here. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. I would ask those with cellphones if they would please put them on vibrate or silence them by turning them off, we'd appreciate it. Also, this is our second meeting of the Commission with a new software package called Board Docs, so that through the meeting we may have a little slippage of, somebody might need a little help in getting through to where we might be at in the agenda, but just so the public is aware, this is our second meeting with these, so hopefully you'll bear with us, and by the end of the month, their next several meetings, we should be everybody up to speed. Thanks. At this point, we're at the Item B, No Proclamations, Item C, Public Comment. If anyone, this is time for the public to think about speaking on an agenda item. Is there, you have three minutes per individual. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, you should identify yourself now, and we'll call on you at the time that that agenda comes up, agenda item comes up. Is there anyone in the audience at this point that would like to speak on an agenda item? Yes, ma'am?
(inaudible).
You're already on, she's on the agenda? Okay, okay, that's part of the group? Okay.
Your Honor, matters presented by the public.
Yeah, you have something that you'd like to speak on? What item is that?
Just matters presented by the public.
Okay. Could you identify yourself for the record?
No. I am Clarice Rennolds.
Clarice Rennolds?
Yes.
And you want to speak on one agenda item?
Matters presented by the public, is that an agenda item?
I know, but there's a, there's a item on the agenda that, that deals with that?
No.
Public hearing on a single lot? E1?
She's talking about the public.
E1?
I.
E1.
I.
Huh?
Matters presented by the public.
Oh, matters presented by the public. Oh, you don't have to identify for that, you, no. That was specifically on the agenda, we didn't want to go by something if you already had a comment you would like to say.
I don't think that's what she wants to talk about.
No, she said I down here.
This is about, they were going to talk about the enforcement.
Where they want, is that where they want to talk about?
Right, if that's what they're.
There's also an agenda item, E1. Is that what you would like to talk about with the single lot special assessment? No? Okay, okay. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Assistant City Manager.
Under the consent agenda, one, approval of the city commission meeting minutes of May 21st, 2018. Item two, approval of the community services board meeting minutes of April 24th, 2018. Item three, approval of the community services board meeting minutes of May 24th, 2018. Four, approval of the historic structures management committee meeting minutes of April 25th, 2018. Five, approval of the zoning board of appeals meeting minutes of April 18th, 2018. Item six, award of a contract to PK Contracting Incorporated for annual pavement markings. Seven, authorization of a grant application for port security grant funding for two-way radios for the fire department. Eight, authorization of a grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Waterways for George Kemp Downtown Marina repairs of two additional finger piers. Item nine, authorization of a grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Waterways for George Kemp Downtown Marina concrete boardwalk repair. Item 10, authorization of depositories for city funds for the 2018-19 fiscal year. Item 11, authorization of city administration to explore options with the zoning board of appeals on split zoning corrections. Item 12, approval of value trends incorporated engagement letter. Item 13, from the Economic Development Corporation, approval of funds for redevelopment-ready communities, RRC, required economic development plan and marketing plan. 14, from the Bureau of Indian Affairs, notices of non-gaming land acquisition applications. 15, from the Sioux-St. Marie Tribe of Chippewa Indians, easement modification request. And item 16 is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, thank you. For the public's sake, if anyone would like further information on those consent agenda items, you can go to the city's website, and they're fully explained, right? As outlined. Is there anyone on the Commission that would like something further explained on the consent Commissioner Twardy?
It's so moved that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
I'm just waiting for one more electronic vote, and I'll close the voting. Voting has been closed, thank you. Item E, Special Orders of Business, one, public hearing on single lot special assessment role SL-1N-18 and SL-1W-18.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioners are aware, twice annually, in time for the summer tax bill and the winter tax bill, city administration develops a list of unpaid bills related to specific properties for consideration as a single lot special assessment. This includes bills generated by the Community Development Department, as well as any outstanding water bills where water has been terminated and the bill remaining unpaid. Presented is a listing of preliminary single lot property assessments for property maintenance issues, late rental registration fees, and delinquent water and sewer bills related to individual properties located within the city. If approved, these charges would be placed on the July tax bill. Please note the amount listed on the assessment roles is based on charges to date which have remained unpaid. Pursuant to Chapter 21, Article 5 of the City Code, property owners are given not less than 30 days' notice of the amount owed and the property affected. All property owners of record were sent a notice of this action on April 5th. For code enforcement billings, property owners have been sent monthly statements during this time. For sewer and water accounts, there is no service at these properties, and repeated efforts at collection have been made. Prior to taking any action on this matter, the city commission will need to conduct a public hearing on single lot special assessment role SL-1N-18 and single lot special assessment role SL-1W-18. Following the public hearing, it is my recommendation city commission confirm both of the special assessment roles as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll hold the public hearing on the single lot special assessment role SL-1N-18 and SL-1W-18. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. City Commission. Let's go to Commissioner Gary.
I make a motion to confirm the single lot special assessment role SL-1N-18 and single lot special assessment role SL-1W-18.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Rule call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item two, under Special Orders of Business, first reading of an ordinance to amend Section 10-1 dot 1911, print C7, of the city zoning ordinance to extend, extend the validity period of approved site plan from six months to 12 months, and schedule a second reading for the June 18th, 2018 city commission meeting.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission has unanimously recommended increasing the duration of the validity of approved site plans from six months to 12 months. Aside from aligning the validity of site plans with the validity of any variances granted by the zoning board of appeals, which have a duration of 12 months, approving this would enhance the business-friendly atmosphere cultivated in the city and provide additional flexibility to developers seeking to construct or otherwise implement approved site plans. The alignment between site plan and variance validity periods would also likely position the city to more effectively complete its efforts to become a redevelopment-ready community. Finally, increasing the period from six to 12 months would place the city more in line with some of its peer communities such as Marquette, Escanaba, and Alpena, with which it is competing for talent and investment. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the city commission first, or excuse me, hold a first reading of the ordinance as presented, and schedule a second reading of the ordinance for the June 18th city commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And this is the first reading, right?
Correct, Mayor.
So, we need a motion, Commissioner Baker.
Make a motion to hold the first reading as presented and schedule the second reading for June 18th, 2018 city commission meeting.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Item F, Communications, one, from Commissioner Twardy, community inclusion initiative.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Twardy?
Well, thank you. After several conversations, and I believe mostly with the city manager and then also with Mayor Baspus, and a lot of our peer communities are already writing inclusion, full inclusion initiatives, including Sioux-St. Marie, Ontario, and I think that we have a great opportunity here as our city continues to grow and develop to just show that we are in inclusion, and that anybody here is welcome to come and create a business, to live in our community, and be fully accepted for who they are. So, I would like to see if I could get the Commission's support on asking administration to move forward with this initiative. And I think the initiative basically speaks for itself, what it is, unless anybody wants me to go into it a little bit further.
I guess, I'd ask the city manager, what would you think would be the next steps?
Thank you for that question, Mayor. In researching this matter with the Michigan Municipal League, there would be a number of different avenues that could be taken. There could be, for example, an approach where the city starts with the larger institutions, governmental, educational, and other institutions within the community to discuss, is it possible to approach something like this as a group? It would also be possible to directly engage with stakeholders. In this particular instance, I think perhaps engaging with those institutions would be an appropriate first step to make sure that those stakeholders who would be involved are correctly identified across the community. There are a number of examples which have worked in other Michigan municipalities, and have been well received by those communities.
I guess, the, working toward a, what, a final mission statement about inclusiveness? Is that right?
Right, that would be one option. I think a lot of the initiatives which would come from something like this would be born out of conversations with different organizations, different stakeholder groups, holding conversations and discussions about how the city, the community could, could move forward and really receiving the input from the public about what, for Sioux-St. Marie in particular, in its own right, what fostering inclusion and diversity would look like.
Mr. Talentino, you have a question?
No, I think this is a great idea. I mean, I think everybody should feel welcome when they come to our community, you know? So, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to have the administration look into the community inclusion incentive.
I'll support it.
Okay. We got to record anyway, so. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and support. Rule call, please. While you're typing, just to, we could do a voice vote, but then we don't have to vote by the machine anyway.
I'm sorry, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item two, under Communications, is from Commissioner Baker, presentation on Malcolm Park.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Okay, thanks for your time, we appreciate it. This presentation will have a focus on Malcolm Park, but it is also in regards to our parks and rec as a whole, as well. With Malcolm Park Pride and the Kickball Tournament coming up, that they're raising money for, funds for a pavilion and new bathrooms up at the ballfields, recently came to my attention that some of us may have not been up to the fields in a long time, played on them, been in a bathroom up there. I know everybody's driven by them, but since my appointment and election as city commission, our city parks have been at the forefront of my mind as one of our biggest opportunities for progress in our community. Like many community members, I've been using the parks for years, but have been noticing worsening condition as I imagine many of you have. If you ask anyone from the Sioux border parks, you'd like to hear many negative things. One of the final factors pushing me to get involved was my own experience up at Malcolm Park and the softball fields. Bathroom facilities are unusable, the infield on some of the diamonds had broken glass, dugouts are in pretty rough shape. It's also, I was given a tour of the facilities when I was appointed, but Malcolm Park wasn't one of those, so that kind of, after I had time to think about it, made me think, maybe some of you haven't been up there as well. Although I'm highlighting, highlighting Malcolm Park now, I'll be coming to future commission meetings with other parks, as well as Sherman Park, and commenting on those. I believe our parks are one of our city's greatest assets, we have huge tourism-driven economy, and our parks can serve to complement and even highlight those tourism experiences. They're also important for residents as well. Current residents are always looking for something to do around town, and elevated parks and recreation experience can be a great solution for them. Also, the potential for new residents are likely to factor in parks when considering the Sioux for a new home, not only for recreation sake, but for aesthetic value, quality of life, and accessibility to natural resources, which our area, we have a ton of. I'm not meaning to diminish the quality of work from the DPW or Parks and Rec. In fact, I want to thank them because they've been working their butts off this year, and I'm just, I'm really excited in the direction that they're going, so I appreciate all the work that they've done. I believe that they're understaffed and unable to keep up with the demands of maintaining the, what we've put under Parks and Rec. It's quite a bit. As a Commissioner, community member, I think it's time for the city to refocus our efforts in maintaining our parks for the community members and generations to come. I believe we should develop individualized master plans for each park with their own budgets and financial reporting, resources, and operations. Our Parks and Rec Department currently operates parks, cemeteries, historic homes, the Polar, et cetera, under all one umbrella, but they each have their own unique needs, challenges, and opportunities. Having a higher level of detail will allow us to execute and track progress. I'll start the video, if you will, just a little overview of Malcolm Park, why continue here, save some time. I'm trying to talk as fast as possible, I'm sorry. This is, just kind of give you an idea of what we see on a daily basis up at the fields, and what people flying into Sanderson Field see and driving to Lake State. So, as you watch that, listen to the rest of my spiel, I guess. In looking at the capital improvement plan for Parks and Rec, for the next six years, their wish list, we have 1.5 million roughly wished for that budget. Of that, 58 percent, over half of it, is dedicated and allocated to the Polar. Out of that 1.5 million, $876,000, which is a facility that is used at most by the public 50 times a year. Only 17 percent, or 263,000, is allocated to new equipment, 4 percent is only allocated, or 65,000, to our historic homes over the next six years, and a mere 10 percent over the next six years, or $160,000, is allocated to every other park that we operate under Parks and Rec. I do not believe that this is a fair allocation, nor do I feel it's a representative of our constituents' wants and needs. Additionally, while the Polar is a source of community pride and history, it is a huge liability to our budget in a way that it's currently operated. The Sioux, the city loses anywhere between 200 and 300,000 a year on the Polar. Further, if we do everything that the Parks and Rec requested in the CIP and do nothing to address the issues that we're facing at the Polar, over the next six years, we will have lost between, anywhere between 2 to 2.5 million dollars of taxpaying revenue. As a Commissioner, I cannot justify this to voters. I understand the maintenance at the Polar is more expensive than other facilities. However, while the Polar has gotten the most of the Commission's attention over the last decade, our parks have suffered greatly. Doing improvements at other parks like Sherman and Malcolm Field would take a minuscule portion of that 876,000 to make major, major improvements. So, can we put projects on hold at the Polar for a year to invest a tiny bit more into our other community parks? I believe we should reevaluate the best way to meet the needs of the Polar while maintaining our responsibility to the rest of the city's parks for the community. I'm in no way saying shut down the Polar, I'm saying we need to figure out a better way to run it. My concern lies entirety, with the entirety of the Parks and Rec Department, of which the Polar takes up half the resources. I'm also concerned with including certain things of Parks and Rec budget that aren't actually parks. For example, I'm kind of confused of how a cemetery outside of city limits falls under that realm. Kane's Rink, the Marina, those, the Marina is a private Marina, the public is not allowed there. So, I'm confused at how those parks fall under that realm, how we put that there. I don't believe the public's aware completely of the knowledge and the breakdown of our Parks and Rec. I understand that all the information is out there, but the reports are not easily accessible and are not very user-friendly. The taxpayers are not likely to find our budget reports helpful or informative. It is then on us as a commission to bring that information to light for them. Yet another reason why I'm bringing the issue and will continue to do so before the Commissioner and the voters. This may sound like a lot of changes and difficult conversation, but it's necessary for forward progress, and I have to mention and highlight what an example of that, and I give them credit for it, is Lake State's decision to close their pool and invest in their volleyball and basketball programs. I know it wasn't a popular decision, but it required a lot of hard conversation, and when it came down to investing and bringing students to the college, they made the right choice. I think we as a commission should really examine our resources and have those hard conversations as well, so we can serve our entire community in the best way possible. As a commission, we've been urging our community to clean up their homes, properties, and business. I believe we as a city were to do the same with our properties, such as our city-owned parks, residents would be more likely to follow suit. We are the leaders in our community, and we should be an example to residents, especially in our capacity as city officials. Malcolm Park especially, as you can see from that video, is located on a major thoroughfare. Potential students, visitors pass by, parents from Lake State, as well as anyone flying into Sanderson Airport or visiting the EDC building. These are people who have potential to invest in our community and attend college, we should have the resources to show that we take pride in our community. The Lieutenant Governor was just here, less than a month ago, and he flew in, and he drove right by our parks. We may be the oldest city, but I don't feel our parks need to look at it. I understand that some of you may disagree with me, but that's fine, we can still try to aim to be better. I'm not saying my solutions are the right ones, but at least can we start a conversation of what we can do to be better and make it easier for our employees like Dan and Jim to do the best job that they can do. Again, I want to thank you guys so much for everything you do do. I know it's hard, especially with the loss of the prison crews. I know that was a major factor with the ballfields, and that's, that's it. I think Malcolm Park is a good opportunity for, to make revenue in the future for the city, if done correctly, and again, our Parks and Rec are our biggest asset, and I think by investing, just, it wouldn't cost anywhere near comparison to what we've been putting in the Polar over the six years into a few of our other parks. Sherman Park at one point, back when I was growing up, was the place to be, that the entire town was there. There was a concession stand, and now it's, it's nothing. I'm really excited about all the playground equipment coming out around town. Kudos to the Parks and Rec and the city for doing that, and there is money to be replaced for those too, if, in case people weren't aware, that they weren't going to get replaced with new things, they're not just getting taken out, but as you can see from the playground equipment up there at Malcolm, it was pretty dangerous and unsafe, so thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, let's go to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Director Wires to speak to the Commission and perhaps outline some of the progressions within the department in recent years.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for bringing the issue up, and there's a, there's a lot to be said, there's a lot to unpack here. From the Parks and Recreation standpoint, I'll start and I'll end with the same statement, added resources are welcome. They're always welcome. And without trying to go too deep into it, but at the same time being able to share back, seven years have gone by. And I know you've had a chance to see the memorandum that we had when we had two state prison crews, and to put it in perspective, at Malcolm Park specifically, we had one state prison crew with seven to eight people who were there, assigned there all summer long. So, we had, and I know you've heard this before, so we lost that in 2011, we lost a lot of manpower, and as a department, a lot of manpower, we just, we just lost. It wasn't union labor, it was just the, the prison crew labor. So, it's taken seven years, and so we're, we've got this in front of us now. We did work, as you know, with the Chippewa County Sheriff. We do have one jail crew, and we average for maybe one to three people on that, it gives or takes. That's something that we would like to see improved, that's something that Oliver and I are talking about as well. So, we did add some labor, but we lost a lot, and it, and these are some new opportunities. Specifically to Malcolm Park and to some of the issues that are up there, obviously some of the infrastructure is old, there's, as you, you can drive by, you can see it, and it seems like, I don't know what the, some of the soil that's up there, but some of those buildings are old, they're block, old block restrooms, they're 25, 30 years old, there's cracks in them, and we clean them, we, you know, we've had to take some porcelain out, we put in steel restrooms because sometimes they just get abused. So, they've been there, our infrastructure is old, that's a fact. And the maintenance building that you do see up there on the corner of 8th and Meridian, that is one of those issues that I believe that went into the sixth year CIP two years ago. So, we, maybe that should have been in before that, and certainly that's something that we could move up to make that a, a better opportunity to have that. With the Malcolm Park Working Group, been formed, I have been working closely with Ken LaJoy and Kevin Palmeroy as well, and kind of given some ideas from last year. Last year, we did start a cutting of the grass, an upgrade. We've had to change certain things so that we could, we cut the infills twice a week now instead of once, and we cut the whole park once. So, the grass cutting, we've done some things to improve that. Again, you know, added resources are welcome, but currently, we do have a, we've been one employee short this spring, and I believe that's going to change here on June 11th, we're going to get another full-time employee, but we've started, that will start June 11th. But we're also working with our seasonal staff that started today as well, there's some things that we're taking on. For instance, some of the things that, that are there have been worked on already. Found out through our employee that the, the drinking fountain that wasn't working was plugged up with chocolate, truly chocolate. I don't know why a kid would dump chocolate in it, but they did. So, we're getting some of that taken care of. So we're getting some of that taken care of. In the things that the jail, the prison crew has done, and it's not just Malcolm, it's everything else that they've done. So I could go into a laundry list of things, but specifically for tonight, added resources are certainly welcome. We are working diligently to take out dangerous things, certainly then to, as resources are available, to put new, new materials in. There's been a lot of good things that have gone on at Malcolm Park, but certainly there's a lot of work to do up there.
City Manager?
Thank you for that presentation, Director Wires. Just to touch base on some of the details of the information that you had a chance to circulate regarding the two state prison crews which were eliminated, I believe the figures were that the contracts provided for about 420 hours per week, which equates to 5.5 full-time Parks and Recreation assets or employees. I know that they also were involved in some street department activities. So certainly, in 2011, at the time, those contracts were eliminated by the state of Michigan. I think it tracks with what you're seeing across the state in many municipalities, the reductions, the 56% reduction in revenues to local units from the state of Michigan. And that's something that's being seen across the state, something that certainly pushes the city and the departments to maximize efficiencies, maximize resources. And even in the past four, five, six years, you've seen a lot of community engagement. You've seen the work from the Lower River Island Committee, the Malcolm Park Pride Committee, you know, in addition to our local jail crew. I mean, those efforts have certainly helped to continue some of our efforts locally. We know that it's a matter of prioritization, definitely as Director Wires mentioned, it's something where we'd like to take a hard look at where we can make improvements, where we'd like to make them, and push forward with those even in that era of constrained resources. I know that there was discussion, both from the Commissioner and Director Wires, about playground equipment. And just for those who are watching at home, there's approximately $75,000 which has been budgeted for replacing playground equipment in 2018. The public will start to see some of those items which are safety hazard or obsolescent being removed. And certainly, in that same vein of community engagement, we certainly encourage public feedback from everybody as to what they'd like to see within the parks. And I think that will help guide in the coming weeks what we can do as a community to move forward with some of those installations. But certainly, the Malcolm Park Pride Committee, they've been fantastic to collaborate with as the user groups have come forward, providing information on the six-year CIP field conditions, the seasonal line item, and employees. Certainly something that is on the top of our radar. Parks and Recreation, certainly a quality-of-life issue within the community and in a competitive environment, continuing to receive all of the feedback, try to push forward.
Okay, thanks. The, just a couple of comments, and then I'll go to the rest of the commission. We dealt with this at the budget process, and I, I believe at that time, a number of assets, as I would call them, were given to the Malcolm area type of thing. And the, we had the same similar discussion with Commissioner Baker on, on how we would look at recreation, and at this point, the commission is, is moving forward with the plan that the commission approved, which hasn't changed much over the years, and that's why I think Commissioner Baker makes, makes her point now. But going forward, there's no question that, given the resources available, some things are going to struggle a little bit more than others. Every plant that we have struggles with, with the reality that we just don't have enough money or, or workers or, and, and there's not, that doesn't mean that we can't do something a little bit different. I think as a commissioner, we've, we've talked about that going forward, and we've allocated the things, I think appropriately as the commission sees them. And with that, I'll just leave it to some of the other Commissioners. Commissioner Gary?
I think I have the same type of comments. We have already approved the CIP plan, we've gone through goal setting, we approved the budget. In fact, in goal setting, we did approve a line item that said expand resources that are dedicated for the improvement of Malcolm Field, and that was approved on February 20th, 2018, I guess it would have been. So we took into consideration some of the surveys from the master recreation plan, some of the community surveys as, as to how the fields were ranked in, in the citizens' eyes on how much we should put money into them. So I think we have and, and are doing things to move forward, but everything has to be budgeted, and we've gone through and approved that process. So I, I think we're moving forward, and I think we're, we all see the need to make improvements to the field, and I think we see the need to make improvements in other areas of the city too, and we've approved the budget process already, so.
Commissioner Tordi?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few comments, and I also agree with that. We just came through goal setting, we just set the budget for the next fiscal year. Also, the Malcolm Pride Committee has been coming to the Community Services Board, and I feel like that relationship is really coming along well. One of the things that the Community Services Board, or Dan Wires, had suggested that we should do up there, which the Pride Committee felt we should do something else, we were going to spend money on fence toppers. And the Pride Committee actually came to us and said, you know, we would prefer if we could figure out what else the users feel is more important up at the, at the ball fields. And, and because I do go up there, my husband plays softball, but I'm, you know, I'm not using the fields. They would understand what they need more, and so they wanted to dedicate that more for, towards turf low. And then we also set a $4,000 grant that came out of the SEAL Fund for improvements to one of the dugouts. And, you know, so I think this, this, these specific line items are going to help us to expand that working relationship with, between Malcolm Pride and the Community Services Board. And as we continue to do, be able to do like small capital improvement every single year, the fault, the fields will continue to look well. But, you know, we all came through the budget, and I've been saying to Oliver quite a bit lately that, you know, you don't go on vacation until your mortgage is paid, and really, there's a lot of, you know, I would like to spend more money getting blinking lights at all of our school crosswalks. That's where I would like to spend money, and I, I think that Commissioner Gary would probably have ideas of where we would like to spend money, but it's important that we all come together as a group and we decide as a group where those budgets and where that money should go. And it's important to listen to the city manager's recommendations because he's ultimately the one who runs the city. So I feel like we're, we are doing a good job, and we're moving forward, hopefully seeing progress.
Anyone else? Commissioner Baker has some comments, but there's some questions, but anyone, anyone before we go to, okay, Commissioner Baker?
Okay, just to clarify, I'm not asking for more money to be allocated to Malcolm Park. I think what is going, moving forward with Malcolm Park is great. They, the, between the kickball tournament and what they got from the budget this year, they're well on their way to doing what they need to do. But more specifically, I'm talking about our Parks and Rec as a department. In researching Parks and Rec in other communities, I'll use Pataki as an example, you click on their Parks and Rec Department, and they literally have a master plan for each individual park. And researching through the hundreds and hundreds of pages of stuff that I've gotten as a commissioner, I couldn't find any kind of breakdown for Sherman Park, a, a number of other parks, which I, I've learned has been grouped under one together. So I guess, in my opinion, I feel like it would be better, in an easier way, for us to be able to allocate for next year's budget for each individual park if we had an idea of the needs of each park. So I don't know if we need to make a motion, if I need to make a motion to request a CIP for each individual park for six years, so then we can see what needs are, like, okay, the bathrooms up at Malcolm Park, see, these bathrooms up at Malcolm Park, as you saw in that video, were donated by Auguste Seale. There's a plaque on there. Her name's on that. Her family, they donated that money. In 1996, those buildings, those bathrooms were built, and 20-some years later, it looks like a prison bathroom. And how are we, as a city, supposed to honor our donors that come in? And yes, the prison crews were a lot, but that's no excuse for the way that those bathrooms look right now, in my opinion. So by look, taking a hard look at Parks and Rec and how they determine what is needed and what isn't, and for us to be aware, and the public as well, to have input, I think by having a master plan for each park would be very helpful. You know, Commissioner Tordi mentioned, you know, your mortgage is paid, you, you say that, but at the same time, the loss of the Polar, it's just, nobody is taking it, is, in my opinion, I feel like nobody's taking it as serious as I feel it is. And as far as the fencing goes up at Malcolm Field, there's no point of the toppers. You can, the toppers that, you can see by the three fields that are maintained well by volunteers, all volunteers for the most part, are the high school fields. And those yellow toppers, they look great on top of them.
And I don't want to cut you off, but we've been on this about 20 minutes, 25 minutes, maybe? So I understand.
I know, it's my last comment, I'm just talking about the fencing, the toppers.
We have a process, and until that process, until you get four votes, the process remains the same. We've already approved the budget. We talked about the ball, the bathrooms being taken care of.
Excuse me, I was speaking, I was just finishing.
Okay, so wrap it up.
And then I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, and then, so, all I'm saying is, as far as, the toppers aren't any good if the fencing underneath, it's not good. It'll be all janky and it'll look like crap. I would like to make a motion. Can I make two motions?
One motion at a time.
Okay, so the first motion would be that we research, have administration research and look into the feasibility of doing a master plan for each individual park or entity that falls under Parks and Rec.
Any support to the motion?
I'll support that. I mean, we're just, we're just saying we're basically looking at setting a master plan for each specific one, and then looking at basically creating cost centers so we can track the expenses to know how much money is being spent in each park, correct? Kind of that's the plan.
I would just like the administration to research the feasibility and how difficult that would be for our department to take a look at each individualized park to, to get reporting, so I, or anybody else, can see the breakdown of what gets spent at that park. Because with that 10% from that CIP, it's just not broken down. You can't see Sherman Park, you can't see them individually, and if we had a master plan, it would be easier to set goals and accomplishments by doing so.
Okay, City Manager has a comment?
Yes, that, that is correct, Commissioner Baker, that a number of parks are aggregated in the budget under Parks and Recreation, so that it would reflect staff expenditures and supplies expenditures. For, for example, for Sherman Park, Rotary Island Park, Chandler Park, a number of any other Parks and Recreation facilities. There are other subcategories for other facilities that are tracked separately for one reason or another. So for example, the George Kent Marina, the Harvey Marina, those are facilities that are tracked separately. The Polar, that's tracked separately, the historic homes and the cemetery. So a number of the activities under Parks and Recreation are tracked separately. I understand, I believe, the feasibility of determining for the portion that's aggregated, how much is comprised of each park, if that's the, the request that's being discussed at this moment.
Can I?
Commissioner Gary?
I just wanted to make sure we're not confusing master recreation plan, and, because we just spent a lot of money and time and effort to create a master recreation plan that addressed all of the parks in the system, and we did a community survey, and I can't remember what dates that is effective through. It's, it's quite a long period of time, and those are plans that are used. We have to submit to the DNR and, and different entities to make sure that we're eligible for grant funds and so on. So, but if you're talking about maybe just looking at a different budgeting system, maybe to see, which you can do with the system that we have already, you know, and we did it during our budget process, we looked at the revenues that come in for each department. It's very difficult with a complex department like Parks and Rec, and how many parks do we have?
Over 30.
Yeah. I mean, it's very difficult to allocate all the time, resource, and everything that we put into the parks, but, you know, if there, if there's a way to see, the other, the other thing you have to take into consideration, I think, is that with quality-of-life, Sault Ste Marie placemaking, it's with communities and with governmental accounting, you don't make a profit on every cost center, you can't. Some of these things are things that you provide a service to the community. We provide a park, there's no way that Sherman Park can make money. You know, Sherman Park Campground, maybe it could make money. But, so I, I, I don't know what the difficulty, or what the level of difficulty would be to separate some of those individual cost centers out, so you could see something differently, but.
Yeah, and I guess.
Excuse me, City Manager? Well, time-wise, we have a budget, we've approved the budget, we've put money into the, into the recreational aspects of, of the Sioux, including Malcolm Park. And Commissioner Baker isn't happy with how it, it breakouts at this point, but, don't, you know, that's what you're saying, you're not happy with, because you can't tell where the money's being spent on a, a particular items, although the Polar, you can see, is getting 800 and some thousand dollars.
Can I clarify for a second?
Not, not quite.
Okay.
I just, we're getting way off, off track here. And I just, how much time are we, we have the city manager, he has a staff, they are very busy, and I don't, we should, we have a goal setting, and we talk about the goals that we will establish for the year. One of those goals was not to break out the recreational aspects. Now you want to add another goal, because it takes a lot of time to, to, to do that. I'm not in favor of adding any additional goals on what we've already approved as a commission. If you have an idea about what you would like to do, and I think you should sit down with the city manager and, and work on maybe when, when he has time, to come up with some ideas that he might think are commendable, but I, I'm not, at this point, in favor of adding more on his plate, or the department head's plates, on more than what we've already approved as a commission as a whole. And that, that's what I'm talking about. Now you, you could talk about the Ball Diamonds, and you got, and it's great that the Malcolm Pride, and you, you have the kickball thing coming up, which I think is going to be successful, hopefully. And those are, those are items that, but you, we take little steps to get to a, a larger step eventually. And we know that the bathrooms need to be taken care of, and they're looked at, I mean, they're cleaned every day. We can't control, because we don't have a person on-site, there's, people going in the washroom or, or doing whatever, so we're getting, it's convoluted, your whole issue about, now you're breaking it down that you want individual, you know, cost centers for, for that stuff. We talked about that at budget, budget time. And the commission voted as a, as a group, that these are the goals that we're going to have. So am I, I'll give you a chance to speak, but.
Can I clarify here? I guess what I'm trying to say is, can we try to shoot for a better plan for our Parks and Rec? As far as having a plan for each individual park and goals, it would be easier to track and monitor. And I understand this is how we've done things, and it's going to be more work, but progress means more work. And when you're talking, when you're referring to the bathrooms up there and talking about people cleaning them, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the cracked cement floors, the chipped paint falling off. That's not something that, I'm talking about the maintenance aspect of it, not necessarily the cleaning of the bathrooms. I, I guess I'm just asking if we could take a look at our Parks and Rec and see if, what we can do to do better and have a plan. If we had a master plan for each park, you could set up times to, there, there's lots of things you could do to be better, and.
There is.
I, I don't understand why this isn't worthy of a conversation, and it, I know, I understand that we have goals, but am I not allowed to bring something to the commission that I feel is?
Well, you're, you're allowed to do whatever you get four votes for. What I'm saying is, part of the discussion is that we established as a commission, certain goals for the administration to do over, over this next year, and going forward over a two-year process. I don't, I think as a commission, we got to be careful, we don't want to add to those goals, because it all takes time. And that's what I'm, am I?
I guess, I guess I'd look at it.
And I'm not just, it's not me and you type of thing.
Can I, can I direct a question to Dan real quick?
Well, I don't know, it should go through the city manager.
Or, city, I'm sorry, city.
What I like to do is have some of the Commissioners talk about what, what we're trying to do here, because ultimately, yeah, you, what you want to do isn't a bad thing. It's just a matter of, do we have the time, since we've just been through the budget process, and we've agreed that this is where we want to go, and that didn't make it, so that all of a sudden, you know, you got the Malcolm Pride. of a sudden, you know, you got the Malcolm Pride group that's doing a bunch of good things, we got some, some things happening at the fields, in addition to the polar, in addition to the Sherman Park, in addition to recreation equipment, so we, we are moving forward. To throw something else on there, I think is just, in my mind, too chaotic at this point, when he's got, he's got a plate full. Let's go to Commissioner Twardy, and then we'll go over here.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of adding more goals on right now, and I do know that Dan comes to the Community Services Board every single fall, before all the department heads get together, and the Community Services Board takes a look at all of his important capital improvement projects, and, I mean, unfortunately, because we are in asset management, and a lot of times when he's asking for capital improvement, the assets have already come to the point where they need to be replaced now. And then all the department heads get together with the city manager, and they have to, they have to levy, and they have to fight for their capital improvement, and that's how they get into the potential budget. I mean, he brings all of his asset management capital improvement projects that he would like to see done, they're all on a giant list.
So.
And so, the, the ones that get voted on are the ones that he feels are really, really, really important, that can fit into the budget with Jim Morrow's street department, and Linda Basista with street reconstruction. I mean, that's how the budget gets set. I mean, he can't only have all of his capital improvement in there, we wouldn't have streets done. So, I mean, it's, it's an overall budget.
Yeah, sorry.
So, I mean, so, things will get done as they need to get done. Unfortunately, Kent Marina has had some big things that have had to have, happen this year with the Finger Piers. I mean, and that's important, otherwise, people who are storing those boats down there, they're going to get damaged from the ships that are going by. So, it's, it's just, you know, things get done when they can get done. And I'm not in favor of changing our current goals, because it really throws a monkey wrench into the city manager, his entire year. When you go into his office, he has a whiteboard for his whiteboard, and he's got his whole year laid out, and he knows what he's doing on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly basis, and for the entire year. And I, I think adding more, more agendas and more time into his day, he already works twenty hours a day, so. I'm done, thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
So I think the term master plan might be where everybody's getting a little bit confused, and maybe I got confused with that as well. The way I see it is that we have our budgets in place, we have our goals that are already set for the year, or for two years, but if the question came out, and if I asked the question to the city manager, and I said, "How much money do we spend on Parks and Recreation budget for Malcolm Park?", right? Now, that is not a budgeted cost center, but I know you can give me the answer, because I know you're going to go to Dan, and Dan's going to say, "Of the budget, this is how much goes to Parks and Rec." So if we're asking to basically break that portion out, so that we know how much is being spent on Malcolm Park, that's relatively simple, correct?
City manager?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. I believe that, that's, that's part of the information that was presented in December, as far as the breakdown of information regarding Parks and Recreation, as far as Malcolm Park, how much of the general aggregated portion that, that constitutes. Certainly, I think that would be something that could be done on a conceptual basis, an estimated basis. With the information we have on hand, it would fluctuate, of course, from year to year, between the competing demands at different parks, but that's something that we would, I imagine, would be able to at least estimate.
So, in the budget packet, basically, it showed how much money was basically allocated within the budget to Malcolm Park, but how is that tracked? How do we know that the money that's being allocated to Malcolm Park is actually being spent in Malcolm Park?
Right. That's a fantastic question, and certainly, that's aggregated within the total amount. That can be estimated. For example, we know that meters for utilities up there are specific to those parks. There are some supplies, the staffing, the labor, and if I'm understanding your question correctly, employees track their hours based on a function. So for Parks and Recreation, they would track that in the same area, whether it's for Sherman Park, or Malcolm Park, or maintaining the beach in the shallows. Those would all be under the same category.
Is it possible to, I, I know that Dan had mentioned something about having thirty parks. Obviously, some of the small pocket parks and so forth is not what we're talking about. Is it possible to take a look at time allocation for some of the bigger parks like Sherman Park and Malcolm, to see, or I guess to make sure that they're actually getting serviced, and that the money's being spent there the way that it was allocated? That, my concern is, with my background, is if you allocate money into a specific area, and you spend it someplace else, that's actually misappropriation of funds, correct?
Right. I think it's certainly possible to track on an estimated basis with the information we have, what we'd be going towards, for example, Sherman Park, Rotary Island Park, the Bud Webber Park downtown by the canal. Those are all possibilities, I think, for our employees. The more that they're tracking their time, that may add complexity and take away from their ability to actually implement changes at the parks, but certainly, I think it could be, if there is a discussion about an estimated basis, how much time, how many resources are being devoted to each park, just to make sure that, you know, there's a representation across all of the facilities.
So we don't actually have to have a motion to actually come and ask those questions, correct?
Right. To ask those questions, certainly, administration will do our best to meet the expectations of the city commission.
Commissioner Talantino?
Just a quick comment on this. I mean, we can sit here and probably beat this thing to death all night long. You know, we've already went through the goal-setting process, we've went through the budget. I think she does have some good ideas, and maybe that would be good to get on a goal-setting for next year, you know? I mean, I look at Alfred Park, I mean, I wish we had an extra million or two million dollars to fix Alfred Park. We don't, so we had to close it, you know? We're not going to be able to get everything done, and everything's a process, and it's going to take time. I do think we're headed in the right direction at the ballfields, you know? I think everybody's talking about things, things are happening, but it's going to take time. Nothing happens overnight. That's one thing I've learned quick.
Last, last chance.
Question for the city manager.
Moving on.
In regards to each park, is it safe to assume that Mr. Wires would have, I guess, essentially, a CIP plan in his head, or somewhere for each park? Of what the needs are for each park, and, you know, do you understand it?
That's a great question, Commissioner. And before the season starts, in December, January, something that myself and Director Wires and Director Morrow will sit in on this process occasionally, we sit down and discuss for each of those parks that are listed in the master recreation plan for the succeeding year, what does progress look like? What's, what's achievable within the framework of operations, the staffing, the resources, anticipated revenues? What's able to be achieved? You know, what, what is the community hoping for and expecting as far as progress? So certainly, that's something that we do at an operational level. Something that could be done at the administration level would be to overlay the master recreation plan with the six-year capital improvement planning process, so that as the Community Services Board, as Parks and Recreation, looks at the six-year CIP to cross-reference against the master recreation plan, I think that could help build in some additional information, something that could be beneficial for the commission as decision-makers.
Yeah.
You have a last one?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, if, if that, if that could happen, if, if we would have that information, though, not just Oliver, Dan, and Jim, if we could have the information of what the needs are, so then we can see what is being met, and it's just not, you see, you understand what I'm trying to say here?
Well, only that, if you want to get involved in a recreational program, and I think you are involved a bit, but, I mean, more involved, I don't, I don't care to do that personally. I think that, that it falls in their hands, the day-to-day type stuff, and they come to us with, with recommendations. I'm not, I'm not interested in, in the day-to-day operations of the city, and that's why we hire the city manager. If you want that information, I mean, they, they specifically talk about where, where are we going, and as a commission, we deal with the bigger picture, in my mind. So with that, we have a motion on the floor, I believe, right? And, and support? And I would say, excuse me.
I just want to clarify the motion before we go to a vote on it, because it's been around so many times, but I have a motion to have city administration prepare a master plan and cost center for each city park.
I can, I'll change my motion to request information for a CIP for each park, so we can have the needs.
Basically, the information.
The information. Where, where do you have that at?
You already have it.
Where?
I mean.
Where's the, where's the?
Excuse me.
I have it.
We have a motion.
There's not, there's not, nothing in there for Sherman Park.
Commissioner Baker, we have a, a motion's on the floor. That can't be withdrawn unless the second is willing to withdraw it, according to the city attorney. We can vote on the motion up or down, and, and.
Are you to change it?
Yeah, I'd like to change it to get.
So then I'll withdraw. Then she can change it, right?
So the next process would be just rather go and make motion? Okay. What's your motion this time?
I will make a motion to get a CIP plan for the individual parks that are all aggregated, that aren't individual, broken down in the master recreation plan.
Your support?
Can I ask a question before I support?
Sure.
So you're just asking for the backup that Dan and used to create the CIP plan that we already have?
Right. For instance, the CIP plan for six years has the allocation for Sherman Park, for playground equipment, for fifty thousand dollars, out of that six years, but that's the only thing from Sherman Park. So what I would like to know are, what are the other needs at Sherman Park that are getting put off for six years for this one thing? You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
And all that, that's what I want to know.
Okay. Support.
I just have motion to have city administration prepare a CIP for each city park.
Understand.
Did, did, is that supportive, I?
It's pretty vague, but I'll support it.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Talantino?
No.
Commissioner Twardy?
No.
Mayor Vaspas?
No.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
No.
Motion denied, and deny carry. Okay.
Item three under Communications is from Malcolm Park Pride Committee, Field of Dreams Kickball Extravaganza.
Okay, thank you. City manager, I understand. Kevin, you want me to do some, or you gonna?
Certainly, please.
Okay. We have with, with us Kevin Pomeroy from the Malcolm Pride Committee. Kevin?
We're going to have two, just two quick subjects. Stacy's going to talk about what the kickball tournament is going to be, and I'm going to then talk about what we're asking, what we're going to do.
You want to both go up together, or you want to just, one at a time, or however you want to do it? If you identify yourself for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Stacy Post. Mayor and city commissioners, I appreciate your time in listening to the following statement in regards to the August 25th Field of Dreams Kickball Extravaganza fundraiser. I am new to the Sioux, and I'm coming up on my one-year anniversary in July. My husband is stationed here for the Coast Guard, and since moving here, we have loved this city. It's been an easy place to fall in love with, and currently, I am employed at Lake State in the admissions office as a campus visit coordinator. During my time living in Washington DC, I worked for several nonprofits and fundraising, specifically running a program fundraising for children's cancer research through kickball games. I have seen a group of twenty individuals raise forty thousand dollars in one kickball game. Their dedication was inspiring and proves that it can be done. I have raised funds for environmental causes and children's cancer, but this is the first opportunity that I've had to make a significant difference to the local community with immediate results. I think I have a unique position, being part of the Coast Guard, LSSU, and the city, that I can make a difference through this fundraiser. Malcolm Park Field of Dreams Kickball Tournament will be held on August 25th and will be inaugural event. The Malcolm Park Pride Committee, or MPP, is committed to making it a yearly tradition. We plan to supplement funds from Parks and Rec to garner support for years to come. The decision to use our initial funds for a pavilion with concessions, locker rooms, and new bathrooms is threefold. One, with the pavilion concessions, will generate much-needed funds, funds that can go directly back into park maintenance. Two, it will be a splash for the community, to show the community immediate results, something concrete to show our dedication to improving the fields. I think just having new bathrooms will make everyone happy. And lastly, it will generate great PR and goodwill within the community, and with the community members and visitors alike, we propose that the new building will be maintained by the city, but concessions will be run by MPP. For this year's event, we plan to gather support through a mixture of grass, grassroots and corporate fundraising. We've been reaching out to local businesses, stakeholders, schools, friends, and family to get this event off the ground. Grassroots fundraising will ensure that our local citizens take pride in what they're accomplishment, accomplishing, and empowering the community to do something positive. Local involvement in this project will help to build a better community. We're very much based on tourism, and what a better way to promote, to promote Sault Ste Marie's and our 350th anniversary than everyone supporting a big project like this. Our initial fundraising goal is twenty thousand dollars, but we are aware of the potential to make a larger impact. Our stretch goal is forty thousand dollars, with already a lot of commitments, commitments from businesses and locals alike. We launched the official fundraising website this week, with funds being filtered into the community fund. I anticipate, as the summer progresses, it will become a huge success. Teams and individual players can sign up at crowdrise.com/malcolmkickball. The use of social media will be huge in spreading awareness about this event. The Facebook group has already gathered 136 likes since launching. I know we are a small community, but I've seen huge results happen when everyone joins together. We're providing an initial team goal of one thousand dollars each, which breaks down into ten players, each raising a hundred dollars. Once we start to gain momentum and players see how quickly they can raise, we can easily crush these goals. I have the experience to support participants to reach their goals as well. Because we intend to use all of our funds in the ballpark's best interest, we ask you to waive any leasing fees and insurance fees for the day of the event. In addition, with Carol and Zach McClellan's support, we would request that the new pavilion is named in honor of Gary McClellan, who helped to create the fields initially. With your approval, we would like to include the addition of Gary McClellan's name on our marketing materials. This is a very special community, filled with passionate people, and as a newbie, I'm optimistic that the city will come together to improve these fields, since it's a project that they can be a part of and can take pride in. With your support and help in this endeavor, we can truly create Sault Ste Marie's Field of Dreams. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. You certainly welcome back to talk about, don't go too far in. Couple of questions. You were asking for us to waive the insurance, and I, I don't know that we, we can do that legally, but the city manager?
This is actually something that has been discussed with the city attorney, as far as the liability insurance, and there was a concept that a lease agreement could be fashioned to address that. I don't know if the city attorney would want to weigh in, but certainly, there would need to be insurance associated with the sale of alcohol, and then, it's my understanding the lease agreement would essentially hold the city harmless from the activities happening during the event.
We've already contacted a local insurance company, and we will be, you know, similar to what I, 500 does, of blanket coverage for that day, and we will be, you know, talking with the police, fire, auxiliary police, to have a presence up there during the day if we do sell alcohol in the York County and its surrounding areas.
Great, okay. Any questions? Again, you're welcome back anytime to just bring us up the date, and, and we're on, on the TV, so it does help get the word out, too.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to give you a quick background of.
You need to be, you want to be near the mic, Kevin?
Just to give you a quick, quick background of the Malcolm Park Pride, what we've been doing since last, we talked up here. We've been working with Deb Jones at the Community Foundation, so we are all set, and we are under their umbrella of the 503(c), and that also allows anybody that donates to get the tax benefits. It also gives us the opportunity for them to do all the accounting, so there's transparency within the accounting for our operation. There's no. There's no separate checkbooks or, you know, everything comes through the Community Foundation. We realize in the letter we sent to Oliver that we talked about a initial budget of $90,000. But that's just a opening number for the pavilion. We have not met with a architect yet. Once we meet with the architect and we talk about what we want to accomplish and what the costs are going to be, obviously, we would come and share that with the city. We'd share the plans. We realized we'd have to work with the building department and follow all the rules and regulations of the city. This is my first rodeo. I was involved in Project Park, or not Project Park.
Pride.
Project Pride 25 years ago when we rebuilt the football field. You know, it was a two- or three-year project before people saw the ground break. You know, hopefully, we can raise and do this faster. But if it takes time, a little more time than that, you know, we are going to do it right and put up a facility that the city can be proud of and that will be functional for the area. Like Kathy said, we, Malcolm Park Pride has worked and put a CPI together for the Malcolm Park. And we have about 30 different needs, but we've identified six or seven that will next year be in your 2018-year budget to be able to be considered for expenditures. We also, this year, with the additional funds that were left over from last year's budget, we met as an organization, we put together a wish list, gave it to Dan and Oliver, and they okayed what we did. And you can see those improvements already up, like the Canistro Field. We have safety fencing now up in front of the ball dugouts. So when you're in the dugouts, if you're not paying attention, softball can't come and hit in the eye. And we renovated that infield this spring. So there are ongoing improvements that our organization is working on.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Twardy?
Just a comment. I just appreciate all of the hard work that both you and Linda dedicate to the fields up there and your willingness to work with the city and come to the Community Services Board and share your ideas. And I just think that the relationship's going to continue to foster. I mean, I know you haven't had kids and ball up there for quite some time, but.
Don't say how many years.
Okay, I won't. But I just, I just really appreciate your continued passion and trying to make the fields a better place for everybody. So, thank you.
And when we identified this as our first major project is because Linda had come to us and said, "The high school and then summer programs have a hard time sometimes getting people to come up here, and it's not because of the fields, it's because of the other facilities around." You know, when they have to use portable toilets in the middle of the summer or in the spring when it's cold, and there's no place for the girls to change. You know, so, you know, the whole organization agreed that this is the priority to the first step to improve Malcolm Park. You know, I know the Rotary Club is working towards bathrooms at the Project Playground, and that's another, in my mind, another huge improvement there. And it's more because of a safety issue, because those kids, some parents take them down to James Field or across the road, but some parents point the road, down the road and say, "Go down there." And I've seen a number of close calls with the people that are driving, you know, almost hitting children. And it would be just a shame if something like that would happen up there. So we are using the money that has been allocated to $13,500 in maintenance fund. And it's allowed us to do a project like this because we're not raising those maintenance monies. Now we're trying to raise monies for improvements.
Anyone else? Commissioner Baker?
I want to just kind of go off Commissioner Twardy and say thank you to Kevin and Linda and Sandy Corbier, Mark Serk, Ted Hagley, Greg Ramble, Lisa McGrawry for their years of dedication to up at those fields. Also want to thank Stacy Post and Adam Grunell for bringing their ideas and energy for the kickball tournament to help Malcolm Pride reach their goals. I appreciate the presentation. I think this is exactly what our community needs. I also want to highlight the fact of the Gary McClellan Pavilion, although from that video, as you can see, there's lots of other needs needed to be met at the park. However, with this pavilion, it'll be kind of like the catalyst, the catapult that'll get and keep the momentum going with the kickball tournament. So next year, hopefully, they'll have $80,000 that they raised from the kickball tournament that can go directly into the fencing, the backstops, and so forth. So thank you for all your work, and I, this is definitely the right direction for Malcolm Park and for softball and hopefully make the Sioux a destination for district champions and baseball tournaments for the summer and the economic impact that it would have on our community can be lasting, so I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kevin.
Can I? Make the motions?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, there's lots of them.
I don't see a motion on here. Oh, right here, to authorize, okay, you're right. Yep. Is that, there's a number of items on that. City manager, you'd like to say a few words first?
Right, absolutely. Certainly, as the commission indicated, administration enjoys working with those individuals involved in the Malcolm Park Pride Committee. And there are five separate motions that have been separated out to identify the different components of the event and what's happening, although it's quite possible that a number of these motions could be wrapped into one or two. But just to note that the recommendations are to authorize administration to develop and enter into a lease agreement addressing liability coverage, event activities, and a waiver of fees for the event. Secondly, to authorize the sale of alcohol on city grounds in association with the event and authorize city administration to implement accordingly. Implement accordingly would address the liability insurance issues. Third, to approve the scope of the improvements to be built through fundraising activities as presented by the committee. Fourth, to authorize the establishment of a budget in the amount of $90,000 for project improvements inclusive of SEAL operating funds conditionally approved by the City Commission with the balance to be derived from fundraising efforts. So that would essentially trigger a budget amendment. And then fifth, and finally, to authorize the naming of any improvements in honor of Mr. Gary McClellan.
Great, thank you. And the city attorney says that can be one motion? So Commissioner Baker, yeah?
I'd like to make the motion to accept the city manager's recommendation to authorize all the motions for Malcolm Park's Kickball Extravaganza.
Support.
We support it. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspus?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item four under communications is from Sioux Events. Update on citywide cleanup and 350th celebrations.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start off with the citywide cleanup. It happened just a couple of weeks ago. We had a beautiful Sioux day, rainy, 50 degrees. We still had great participation. We collected a little bit over what we did last year. We had a nice picnic up at Sherman Park. T-shirts were given out to everybody. I did attend Washington School. Kaylin, Kaylin from 5th grade was the winner of the t-shirt contest, and we celebrated that up in his classroom with a treat with everybody. So it's another great event. Thank you to everybody for your participation, the community, the city street department, and all of our sponsors. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
All right. Next, I'll talk a little bit about our 350th anniversary. It's been a busy summer so far, and we're looking forward to everything that is coming up. Our first thing that we completed recently was the banners. They're up on some of the light poles down Portage Avenue and also Ashman Street. I hope you've all had a chance to take a look at those. I'd like to show our appreciation to Jeannie Tubman, who had designed and painted the one with the native and then the Voyager in the canoe. Also to Jennifer Dale Burton, who designed the tribal one that has the turtle. And if you look closely into that turtle, those are representation of both the Bay Mills Tribe and also the Sioux Tribe, who have come together for the 350th anniversary. And then lastly, we have a third one that Linda Hoth had Paul design for us to represent the old and the new of our community. Another project that we're in the middle of doing right now is the Adirondack Chairs. We have local artists that are painting a set of Adirondack chairs. Just last week, our first set was put out at Culture Pop. We have local businesses that are sponsoring the chairs for $200. Our artists are volunteering their time to paint them. And as they get done this week and next, we will be getting them sealed by local volunteers and then getting them placed within our community at local businesses. Reason being, it's an opportunity to show our historic history in Sioux St. Marie as well as our landmarks and things like that. It's an opportunity for people who are visiting to have a break, sit down, rest your feet, and also to appreciate the art that we have in our community also. The flag photo, I believe that we have the flag photo. If any of you aren't familiar with this, May 14th, we had 850 students from the five elementary schools in the community come down to Brady Park. We replicated a picture from 1920 of students that gathered and had cardboards over their head to represent the United States flag. We had a great day, it went really well. We sang the National Anthem, and then once we got the cardboard up above our head, we actually sang "Happy Birthday" to Sioux St. Marie as well. So that gave our photographer, Mike Moberly, and our drone footage, Jim Lahockey, time to get photos. So that was a great day. All of the kids were given a 350 flag pin, so they have a commemorative pin for their participation in this event.
Very good.
Tribal talks, we continue, we started this back in April. The Sioux St. Marie Tribe is hosting a tribal talk once a month. Our next one coming up is June 14th at the Bayless Library at 6:00 PM, and that is on beginner language. It is open to the public and anyone is welcome to attend. You can also check our website at siustmurray.com for the monthly topics as well. And then lastly, we have our festival coming up, which is July 20th through 22nd. We continue to book different acts, whether they be music. We have some cross-cut signs, some, I'm going to draw a blank now, huh? Different activities. We have a group of people coming in to do an old cricket game also, where we'll be asking the audience to come and participate with that. We'll have vendors, food competitions, chopped competition going on down at the farmer's market, bouncy houses, lots of things for the kids and everybody to celebrate our 350th anniversary, as well as historical booths. People can go around and see the different historical aspects of our community. Any questions?
Any questions? Lot of activity.
Lots going on. All righty, thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you.
Item five under communications is from Bike Friendly Sioux League of Michigan Bicycleists Micro Grant update.
Evening, Emily.
Evening. Hi, my name is Emily Weber. I'm the vice chair of Bike Friendly Sioux, which is a nonprofit organization where we are striving to promote bike and pedestrian safety in our community. I would like to thank Commissioner Twardy for the invitation to speak tonight's meeting about my recent trip to the state Capitol in Lansing for Bicycle Advocacy Day. Bicycle Advocacy Day is organized by League of Michigan Bicycleists. It's an annual event where participants are given the opportunity to speak with state legislators, House representatives, and senators about current, or concerns relating to bicyclists. Some of the laws that League of Michigan Bicycleists were advocating for included the three-feet safe passing law, which means that drivers and vehicles are given a three-foot buffer to, when they're passing bicyclists. Another law that they were advocating was more time in bicycle safety and driver's education, as well as preventing needless traffic stops because of bike racks obstructing your driver's or your license plate on your vehicle. Overall, the event was very well organized, and it was a great experience to be face-to-face with our state lawmakers on these important matters. Another benefit to attending the Bicycle Advocacy Day was being awarded the, a League of Michigan Bicycleists Micro Grant that was given to Bike Friendly Sioux. And we applied for it to put towards our Bike Safety Rodeo, which we just held this past Saturday. We feel very fortunate to be a recipient of the Micro Grant. The League of Michigan Bicycleists received over four times the number of proposals as last year. Applying for the grant was not a solo effort. I'd like to thank all those who wrote letters of support. The Sioux Police Department, the City of Sioux St. Marie, the Sioux Convention and Visitor Bureau, the Sioux Tribe, Chippewa Community, or, excuse me, the Chippewa County Community Foundation, and the EUP Regional Planning and Development Center. Bike Friendly Sioux was able to bring $500 back to our community to help children learn the rules of the road and other safety measures while riding their bike. So just some brief updates on our bike rodeo that we held this past weekend. We had a beautiful day, it was on Saturday. We had 26 children participate, and they completed a series of stations. And at the end, they created a bike-related craft such as bike streamers and stomp rockets. Sioux Brew also donated rep air floats for a sweet treat in the end as well. The event was not only hosted by Bike Friendly Sioux, but we had a wonderful collaborative effort with Sioux Police Department and Lake State. Our community continues to amaze me by how generous local businesses are. Wicked Sister provided lunch for all of our volunteers. Parker's Ace Hardware provided all of our pop-up tents for our stations. Meyer donated bananas and water, along with other funds to purchase supplies needed for the event. Other sponsors included Pro Sports. Dave took time out of his day from his bike shop to do general maintenance and checkups on participants' bikes. The Eagle, Capstone Leadership Solutions, and the Sioux Economic Corporation all help advertise our event. So we'll be meeting later this week to recap what worked and what we can do better for next year. So thanks for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, Emily. That's an excellent report. City manager might want to add a few things, then we'll go to the.
Yeah, just would like to thank Emily for attending and presenting on this and for the work of Bike Friendly Sioux. Certainly Bike Friendly Sioux and the city departments. Myself, the city engineer, engineering department, we have a great working relationship and just appreciate their feedback and advocacy for these types of improvements in the community.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was just going to say too. I mean, I think it's really great how the city manager has really, like, jumped right in and he's willing to come to your meetings, because when you get a group of people like you together who are really interested in an activity, you're what's able to shape and reshape what the city can look like and how we can welcome people who use bikes more than, I'm on foot all the time, so I run, and I ride my bike back and forth to work, but that's about it. So I just, I appreciate your willingness to really get involved and get organized and help us make Sioux St. Marie bike friendly.
Yeah.
City manager has one other item.
Yeah, I was remiss to not mention the police department. I know that Chief Riley and Captain Larson have trained an officer to interface with the group and to promote knowledge about bicycling safety, so certainly great collaboration there too.
Yeah, I guess if I could just briefly thank, just our general committee that worked on the Bike Safety Rodeo to Jen Parks was our, kind of our coordinator for the event, and Officer Mayette, he was great to work with, and Roger Blanchard, Joanne and Wayne Barry and Joe Loomis up at Lake State. We, it went well, we're hoping for more participants next year.
Thank you, thank you, Emily.
Item six under communications is from Jason McLeod. Request to purchase city-owned parcel 051-193-018-00. And 051-193-019-00.
Great, thank you. City manager, lead in. Jason, you want to come to the mic while he's doing that? We'll let Jason speak and then.
Sure.
Evening.
Well, as of July, this is going to be my 10th year renovating my area of town with this as South Third of Little Italy.
Could you identify yourself just for the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jason McLeod. Hi, guys.
Hi, guys. Yeah, so it's been about 10 years, and coming up in July, and I've been buying houses sequentially down in the Little Italy area, and I've been renovating them and taking them from being blighted slash condemned, sometimes both, and turning them into higher-end rentals for college students. And the amount of money that it takes to bring a blighted or mostly condemned house up to, you know, code is an arduous horrible thing sometimes, so I have to get creative with how I make my money. So I've gone with college kids, and that's panned out really well. We have a really nice community down there that does all kinds of events. So, but in doing this, I've also created a situation where I need to be able to take care of some of the longstanding problems that we've had in the area for a very long time, like a complete lack of parking, negative green space, I would probably say. It was overgrown and pretty bad for a long time. So to be able to create a community area, I've been buying up chunks of city land, which has been interesting and tenuous. So we've got these two pieces that are listed. There's a third one that's on the tip of Brown and Easterday that I'd like to put a sign for our neighborhood, because we've got it back to a condition where I would feel comfortable now advertising for the area. And about 10 years ago, we had a plan to go through the area. The city had a plan to go through the area and put in signage for the historical neighborhood and everything. So I'd actually like to accomplish that and create some off-road parking to alleviate some of the parking problems that we have throughout the year, and especially in winter. These two pieces in particular that are labeled here off of Ashman Street, and I'm looking to build a park, because we only have one area for green space, and that's across the street from where I live on that little island there. And we -- last year, we had a party, Little Italy Fest, and we had close to 700 people come to Little Italy Fest. Wasn't really prepared for it. So this year, we have the matching amount of space on the other side of the house, so we can fit double the amount of people. But I'd like to try and create solutions for my neighborhood that don't look so commercial. I could turn the back of every one of my houses into a parking lot, and it would look just like junk. It would look like tenement houses. Trying to maintain some of the greenery that we have there is difficult. And two of the pieces that we have here, I've already cleared of the trees that were on there through a lease program that we had with the city. But I'm looking to put so many improvements on it now that it would be silly for me to continue under a lease agreement to be able to build a gazebo and parking and a fence and a nice rock garden with hosta and all these things I shouldn't know the name of. So that's what I'm looking to do here tonight.
And just to add some support to what Jason's been doing over the years, and I've known him for, I think, those 10 years, because I was also in the housing business rehabbing Chippewa County's program, and that's where I met Jason. And he was doing all with his private dollars. And he's done a commendable job. When you look at the homes that he's taken, or the -- they're homes now, but they were just buildings when he got them, a lot of them. And someone pretty rough shape, and he's put his own monies into it, and now are decent, affordable rentals. And it just continues to make the neighborhood look really, really good. And Little Italy, as we all understand, if we're familiar with that, the houses are close together, short of parking, and as empty lots become available, he has had to purchase some from people or from the city. And there's always a need for off-street parking, especially in the wintertime, when we know that you can't park on the city streets, and that's sometimes five months of the year. So I am really in support of doing what we can to make that neighborhood viable, and I think Jason's really made it viable. And all we're doing is kind of adding on to it to make sure that people have a safe place to park. And he maintains his properties, and I think it's contagious. I think other people along the way, as funds become available to them, because not everybody, you know, has the kind of resources that they need. But it seems that the neighborhood itself is starting to clean, you know, get it -- get better.
It's nice that you mentioned that, because I just picked up a piece with Mr. Freeman's help back there. And when I took down the trees and the fence, the next three houses started cleaning up their backyards out of shame. That's pretty nice. So it's -- and then now the view is increased. It's substantially better.
And in discussion with Bruce Brown, who owns the chocolate house there, he is 100% in support of what Jason is trying to do, and he's happy to be in that neighborhood and on that corner, and he's -- it's helped his business, and he feels fortunate to be in that location in the city. And I just think it's a good opportunity for the city. Commissioner Tordy.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just want -- I wanted to speak in support of it, too, because living on a street where the houses are also very, very close together, we do not have a yard, and wintertime parking is -- it's a big issue on my street also, because we have a lot of rental properties. But, and I know that you have parking wars in Little Italy, like, because I've been called to try and solve several of them, and I -- it's unsolvable, because there's just not enough parking for how close those houses are together. And then you have all the business owners that are -- and Greg Maxon, who owns the apartment house, and so there's just not enough space down in there. So I think that you've done a great job with that entire area, and I think that rewarding somebody who is willing to spend a lot of time and a lot of their own money and dedication cleaning up an area of our town, this should be rewarded, and I'm in support of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gary.
I think Jason's done a good job with the neighborhood, and I think we had a long discussion at the -- at one of the previous meetings. The one thing I do have a problem with is one or two of the lots, you don't own the contiguous pieces of property. And under our land sale policy, I know it says that the city commission reserves the right to waive the bidding requirements, as outlined above, when it determines it's in the city's best interest to do so. But I think I'd have a problem if we didn't at least get a waiver from the adjoining property owners, saying that they support your purchase of the property, because I would hate to see somebody, you know, with a lot next door to them, lose the opportunity because they didn't know it would be available for sale from the city. So I think we need to protect the adjoining property owners before we do the sale.
Let me just speak to that. When Mr. McLeod talks about using the lot for parking, that's specifically what the lot would be used for, at least the backside of it. Offering it to the folks along the side could be used for anything. So we have an opportunity as a city to reward a person that has put a lot of time, money, and effort into an area that we know needs parking, and the city owns a couple of lots. I don't have any problem with myself waiving it, because the neighborhood or the neighbors have not shown an interest in any of that. In fact, the house that sits next to it is not even inhabited at this point. And it just makes some sense that we have an opportunity to allow parking to be safer and more accessible in that area, and I would still move forward on that if my vote, anyway. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you for everything you've done over at Little Italy. I think it's been very impressive to see the change -- changes happen, that you've pretty much forced upon the neighborhood and everybody around it, and they've enjoyed it and engaged it. So I, along with you, think it's important that we reward it and waive it for them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Galio.
Yeah, I gotta agree with Commissioner Baker on that. Jason, you did a great job taking care of that area. And let's face it, you know, 50, 60 years ago, Little Italy, nobody owned a car in Little Italy. You know, and that's unfortunately, that's a lot of our situation with our -- a lot of our streets in our town. There wasn't that many cars back then. And I think this is a great idea. I commend you on what you're doing. Great job.
Thank you.
And I believe the DDA has approved, in their meetings, that they did approve, at least recommended that we -- that the property be sold to Jason.
That is correct, Mayor. That was a vote that the DDA passed in 2016. And as a bit of background, the agenda notes the two parcels off of Ashman, and then there's also the additional parcel that is denoted at the intersection of Brown and Easterday with the parcel number 051-193-10600. And I know that Mr. McLeod has, certainly from a due diligence standpoint, considered the technical ramifications regarding the parcels. I know that even today, we had a discussion about the parcel at the intersection of Brown, and it sounds like the signage that he would install would withstand the snow, which is pushed by city buses coming past. So, you know, those types of discussions have occurred. From a procedural standpoint, the city commission, there would be two votes if it wishes to move forward with selling the property to Mr. McLeod. The first would be to waive the bidding and notification process established within the land sale policy, and then the second would be the authorization for the sale of the property. Mr. McLeod has offered $3,800 for the three parcels.
Okay. Everyone understand the process? Anyone else would like to speak? Commissioner Miller.
I just wanna make a comment. Right after I got appointed to the city commission, Jason called me, and I went over to his house, and he showed me around the neighborhood, and he's doing a wonderful job down there, and I support everything that you're doing there.
Thank you.
Really nice. I know you've had some -- some things have been easy for you, and some things have been very hard for you, so I understand. Thank you for what you've been doing there.
Mr. Gary.
And I want you to understand, I support what you're doing. I just do not support the waiver in this case of the bidding requirements.
Completely understand.
Commissioner Miller.
I also support what you're doing, but I have the same concern that Commissioner Gary has. I don't -- what's the legal ramifications to us if we do that?
Mr. City Attorney.
Well, quite a few years ago, we developed the original land sale policy. Because of situations that the city commission had struggled with over the years, we amended the land sale policy a few years ago, and in your agenda is a copy of it. And as indicated in paragraph three of the land sale policy, quote, "The city commission reserves the right to waive the bidding requirements, as outlined above, when it determines that it is in the best interest of the city to do so," end quote. So you have to collectively determine what is in the best interest of the city.
And unfortunately, one of the realities that I face there is when I buy new stuff, everyone knows what I'm doing. So what would be $10 for anyone else is $50 for me now, because that's just the way we are, apparently. So like, it's harder. I just paid $10,000 extra dollars for a house that I didn't even want. You know, so it became -- it's become a sad fact that as I go on, I have to pay more for each one if I wanna be able to completely rehab the neighborhood. So if the other pieces were to go to people that had no interest in them historically, they'd buy them for $10 and sell them back to me for 50, so.
Thank you. We have a -- do we have a motion yet? Commissioner Baker.
I'll make a motion to waive the bidding of sale.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any further questions? Commissioner, I'm sorry.
So the motion is to waive the bidding process, and then the sale of the parcels would be a separate motion?
Yes, separate motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of land to Jason McLeod from the city.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any further comments? Commissioner Gary.
Just so nobody has any question, I'll vote yes on this, because I lost the prior vote, so I just wanted to explain.
Yeah.
It's not a contradiction.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Okay. While you're on your way, again. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Okay, we're into the city manager's report. Item number G.
Thank you, Mayor. The only item under city manager's report would provide authorization for grant application for USDA rural development grant funding opportunity to support the purchase of an ambulance. On April 4th, the United States Department of Agriculture announced that it would be funding key grant programs to address opioid misuse in rural communities. A total of $5 million in grant funding has been made available through a 2018 omnibus spending bill. The USDA grant opportunity could assist in the purchase of an ambulance for the purpose of conducting transports in conjunction with another ambulance, which was purchased last budget year and has already accumulated 31,000 miles. Alternating between the use of two ambulances for long-distance transfers and regular duty would effectively extend the life of both vehicles. The current grant offered by the USDA would fund 35% of a project, up to $150,000, with the remaining 65% being derived as local matching funds. The matching funds may come from multiple sources, and if the grant would be awarded, a budget amendment would be sought at a later point in time, which would be contingent on the amount of funding received from USDA. The price of a new Type 1 semi-furnished ambulance is estimated to be approximately $231,000. It should be noted that the term "semi-furnished" in ambulance dialogue relates to the fact that the package would include an ambulance cost estimated to cost between $12,000 and $14,000, which then may be removed from the current fiscal year budget if that were to be funded. Accordingly, I would recommend the city commission make a motion to authorize a submission of a USDA rural development grant application to support the purchase of a new ambulance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary.
USDA rural development is my employer, and I would request that I abstain from all conversation and vote.
That would be fine.
Okay. Commissioner Talantino.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a submission of a USDA rural development grant application for the purchase of a new ambulance.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any questions? City Manager.
I would just like to thank Fire Chief Labonte for his efforts in researching this grant, and for the administrative team and their support in researching and providing feedback on the grant itself.
Okay, great. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Okay. Item number H, status reports? None?
Correct, Mayor. No status reports on the agenda.
Okay. Aye. Manage presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? I believe.
I have some things to pass out to the Commissioners and yourself. Can I pass them out?
You just come -- sure, you just come to the city manager, and she'll pass them all.
The photos start the next person's session.
If you'd like to identify yourself for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Sorry. I'm Jill Ramble. I'm speaking on behalf of Clary Rental. Hi.
Hello.
I was gonna say, the last time I was here to speak, a total new set of faces, I think.
A few new people.
Yes. So we're here today, I think it's called the Blithe Committee, which assesses building and property.
I think it used to be called the Blake Committee. I think now it's the Community Improvement Committee?
Ah, okay. See, I'm not aware.
More positive spin on it, I think.
Oh, interesting. Okay. So they -- as landowners, we feel that it's a very inconsistent system that is being used at this time. We've added some pictures. The first set of pictures that we have here are from a Ridge Street property. They are next to our property that we were consistently fined on. It's an adjacent property. You can see there's many violations on these properties as well, and they have not been targeted or issued letters, to our knowledge, and there is no cleanup being done at this time. One of the fines that we received on the Ridge property was an abandoned untitled motor home. It was not our property. It was a favor that we were doing to an elderly woman in the community, so that she did not have to pay to store her vehicle. It is only licensed during summer use, because a title, just like a car on a motor home, is extremely expensive, and with it only being used for the summertime use, this owner of this motor home could just purchase a tag, you know, month -- a monthly or her -- a six-month title, I mean, license plate. So it was fined $100 on this property. It is actually, I think someone on the committee actually -- it went up for sale. They actually tagged it to possibly keep an eye on it, to purchase it, or were interested a small amount. But I know for a fact that on one of our city's streets, there is an abandoned motor home. It's been there for quite some time. It's been there for quite some time. I've been driving by it for a minimum of a month and it is on a street where one of, or multiple Commissioners live, which is not being targeted as well. So that's just some things that are, been happening to us as owners and land. The other thing, the other pictures in the next grouping that were separated was from our Arlington property. One of the things that Mr. Brown does, or we have experienced, is that in a letter stated to us on one of our fines, he said the tenant stated that there was a non-working drain. So did Mr. Brown in fact inspect the property and assess our fine? Or did he take the word of a tenant? That doesn't seem like that's a consistent policy possibly of the, the committee or what his job would be. I would think he would need to go into the property in order to assess a fee at that time. There's some, also some other fines on that property too. I guess there's a lot of inconsistencies, I guess is what our main thing is. And we were told in order to come here to possibly get a refund, we needed to address the issues. We're not interested in any money back or refunds. We want to, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Finish. Or you gotta?
I just want to know what the address was for this one. What road?
Ridge. No, no, it would be on the back side of Ridge, so that, the alley between Ridge and the next street. So if you were going towards Sioux Motors, it would be the adjacent Ridge. Our property goes from front to back of that alley.
Is Trump or?
Rose Cap?
Rose Cap or Trump, one of those.
Yeah. We have a, we have a stone garage building. We have a fenced-in area and then the property is next to ours. Yeah. So we're not interested in our money back or anything. We'll pay the fines. We'll do all that. The thing that we find most, yeah, upsetting and just not unfair, but injustice probably would be a better word, is that the amount of inconsistencies that are happening in this program that the city runs. One of our properties has a dumpster on it. It stated in the letter that Mr. Brown actually called waste management. The dumpster is in an alley. It had graffiti on it and they made waste management change the dumpster. So any landowner that has dumpsters or their own trash cans with their spray-painted numbers on it, are, you know, are they being called or asked to change their dumpsters? I mean, this doesn't even affect us, but it's just one more situation where Mr. Brown has an issue with our property. Like, why was he in that alley? Like, our, our properties are mostly on that alley. You know, it just, it's a constant, I don't know, I'm rambling because I'm like nervous and, but you can see in the letter, you see the pictures. I mean, on Dillon Street, where we also own property, there are four abandoned cars, two to four abandoned cars on one of the houses. They've been there. They don't even have tires. Yeah. And no letters, no nothing. They've been there for years. I mean, nothing. Well, if, what's happening there? You know, and the other thing is, is that there's also title searches being done on the properties because of unpaid fees. Well, if in fact we're getting registered letters, and we are, and we're signing for the letters and we're writing letters back and applying to the letters, then you know who owned the property. What is the necessity for a title search then? And in our, we got an answer, which was is, it's how it's done, basically. Well, what is the reasoning for a title search at that point? What's the actual, we don't know. We'd like an answer to that as well.
Okay. Thank you. And then we can go to the City Manager and then, it's not going to be a discussion item. So if you have anything else, we're good.
That's fine.
And then if you want to take it up with the City Manager after?
We, we've written to, but already, it's not our first.
He'll answer some of those questions, though.
Great. You know, the thing is, is I think it's come down to a harassment issue at this point. And if I have a say about it, am I, I'm trying to talk my parents into seeking legal counsel at this point because it's really overboard. And it's quite evident, we, we have pictures, we have discrepancies. One of our tenants had a fridge out, we got a fine for it. We called the tenant and said, you're getting a fine, your refrigerator that you personally own is, we've received a fine for, you have to pay it. He said, I'm not paying it. I called, he called Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown waived the fee. Well, that's not a consistent policy then, so.
Understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Greg, did you have a question?
Do you want these back?
No, these are for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
City Manager and then we'll go to, you can bring up who you want.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Enforcement Officer Brown is here tonight to address the City Commission and I would ask him to come forward to speak to this matter.
Good evening, Robert. Actually, I don't have a presentation, more so if you had any questions. I would like to clarify a little bit of what was stated, particularly the Ridge Street property. We've been working since 2014.
Can you pull the mic a little closer to your, so the?
To clean the property up and it did wind up with court action, which we just complied this early summer. So you can imagine how many years that is to clean it up. The adjacent properties, I'm under the same situation, trying to find the owner. It's two owners and they are attempting to clean it up. It is a mess. Title searches, we require them when they don't comply. After we send notification to an owner to bring their property into violation, before we put a warrant out and go with court, we have to make darn sure that we have the right people. And the only way to do that is to do a title search. We do it for everybody that we intend to bring to court.
Questions, Robert?
The, the, one more thing, as far as the junk and debris, junk vehicles, abandoned vehicles, the Community Improvement Committee has nothing to do with that. The Community Improvement Committee steers me in the direction of blighted structures. And currently, we're at the point we have 40 structures on there that are all a priority structure. So the, the, the question of if we're unfairly targeting somebody is, is just not there. Anybody that's on that list right now is a priority as far as the structures. Does that make sense to you?
City Manager, before we go to the Commission, you have any?
Certainly. Appreciate that presentation, the Community Improvement Committee in regards to structures is a format through which considerations are made on properties. It's, it's something that helps to make sure that there's consistency in code enforcement. I have no concerns with how the Ordinance Enforcement Officer performs his job duties and I think that his presentation is appreciated.
Commissioner Miller.
Couple of questions and a couple of comments. Mrs. Rambo, you had a, you, you were asking about the title search, why they do it?
Yeah.
Did he answer your question? Did he get it?
I'm just not sure why we didn't receive that answer at the first place. I mean, that would have solved it. That's not making somebody got additional.
You requested it and what was your answer?
I think it was the process.
We're not going to get into discussion with, with the public.
Okay.
Okay, so that you have questions you can talk to her after, but the City Manager?
Can I ask Mr. Brown a question then? What, when you get to the point where you're doing a title search, because you're going to court, how much time has elapsed from when you've started to when it gets to that point?
It certainly depends on the situation. If an owner comes to us with a plan of action, even knowing the compliance deadline has passed, we'll certainly entertain that.
You'll work with people?
Yeah. We'll work with them, every single person. In these cases, especially lately with the Clarys, there's been no response whatsoever until we go to court.
Sure.
One last thing. Do you, do you think the way you do things is consistent for everybody? Do you think it's fair and consistent, in your opinion?
100%.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Torri.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I sit on the Community Improvement Committee, as you know, and when you bring nominating properties to us, they're nominated by people within the community. They are seen by you driving, walking around the community. That committee mostly just takes action and some of the properties take years. And if the person is in the condition where they are extremely low fixed income and they have really difficult time trying to improve the property, we, I mean, I feel like the committee is really willing to, to work with those property owners and, and not force them out of their home. We try to, if, you know, we try to work with everybody within their means and I, I don't want to feel like you're, you're getting targeted at all. I would, maybe, maybe, maybe there should be a meeting. Maybe, maybe there should be a meeting. That's about what I'm going to suggest, if maybe you sit down with the Clarys and with Robert and try and hash some things out.
City Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's certainly possible and I would welcome the opportunity to do that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, Robert? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Jason McLeod again. Hi, guys. It's really easy to pick on Robert. He's got a job that no one wants and he's the only one doing it in town. But I can tell you, I consider Robert to be a friend. And Robert picks on me. You know, I have a bunch of college kids, as I discussed earlier, and this year alone, I've had kids put out couches on the road. I've had kids put out, what was it? A bed and a refrigerator and Robert will call me and I'll take care of it as fast as I can. He goes through every proper process coming after me to be able to be like, hey, because he knows that I'm going to take care of it. If he has made it that far in the process, it's because you're not working with him. And I don't feel that enough people stand up for Robert because that's an easy thing to do. We had someone in the, behind the house of the property that I just bought, there was a derelict car and they had to move it after two and a half years of letting it sit there, grow into the weeds and into the rot. And what did the first thing that they do? They drug him over the coals, involved the police, and then had a conspiracy theory that it was me that was calling because I bought the, the property. So there's a whole bunch of unrealistic expectations that go around as to what Robert can and can't do, but he has been nothing but fair. He, Robert has never shown up to one of my parties. Even though I have invited him consistently, he shows up down my street. I don't know why sometimes, but he's just magical like that. So he'll show up and I'll invite him to a party. He's never come because he doesn't want to show himself to be lenient to one person. But I have letters and I currently owe Robert $100. So, and I'm his friend. So if he's picking on people, well, that's a lot of people to pick on uniformly. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Item number J, management presented by the City Commission. City Commission, Commissioner Baker.
Okay. And this is an honest question and all due respect, I've only been here a year. I feel like whenever I bring a topic to the Commission, that I get cut off. And I understand time is important to everybody and nobody likes to sit through three-hour meetings. However, with only meeting twice a month, on average for two hours, we're talking four hours a month to discuss city business without breaking the, is it the Robert rules, the three Commissioners meeting to discuss a topic. So, and then when you say, you know, when I bring up parks and, well, that was part of goal setting, we already went through goal setting. Well, goal setting, we were only allotted roughly a minute and a half to discuss each of our goals. So I constantly feel like getting rushed and brushed aside for, so I'm just curious, when is a good time to bring something to discuss that time isn't going to, I'm not going to get interrupted or be told that, I just feel like it's worthy of a discussion that some of the things that I've brought, that either I get told it's a goal setting. Well, no, you can't do it now, you only have a minute and a half. And then now, today was, you know, we've already done goal setting, you got to wait till next year. It's, it's, I, I just want a clarification of when I can bring some, do I have to have a special meeting? Do I have to request a special meeting with the Commissioners to discuss the parks and rec?
Not an easy, it's not an easy question or, and publicly, it's just, we have dealt with, with those issues that you continue to talk about a number of times. And you had a chance to go through the budget process before we sat down and we talked, I mean, as a Commission about goal setting. We went through each individual, Department head made a presentation. I'm not, I don't think the Commission can run the city. The Commission sets goals that the administration runs the city. So you have, you have ideas and, and it's great that you have ideas, but we have a process now that the city has gone through and continues to go through for, for many years. You want to change it and I have no problem with, with doing, with changing, but ultimately, in order to get issues that you want on, because you want them, not, not everybody wants those kind of issues, but some of your ideas are very good. And I think the, the administration has implemented some of those ideas where the ball timers are getting more attention, but maybe not getting them as fast as you would like. I, I don't know, but I can tell you that the process isn't going to change, at least not going to, in my mind, as one vote, that we've been continuing to go on for the years that I've been here because it's been successful. Now, that's just the way we operate as, as a Commission. I'm not interested in the day-to-day operation of the city as a Commission. That's what we have the administration to do. That's what we have staff to do. You have a lot of questions and I would, it's just going to take time, man. You've been here a year and you want to change some ways, we've been doing business for, for a long time. And it's, I mean, Commissioner Baker. It, it's going to take time. It's going to take patience because I've been in this political process for 36 years now and I can tell you, it's frustrating if you think you can go change the world in a, in a year. It's not going to happen and it takes a certain amount of time. It's like, it's like the, the building, the Blake, the Blake Committee. That was established because we had a haphazard way of, of taking care of blighted properties. So the idea was that we would focus on a particular number and see if we could reduce the number and all of a sudden we had 80, 80 blighted properties that were taken care of in, in a two-year period. I remember that, that was several years ago. So that it, it just, baby steps help get it to where you want to go. And I know you're, you're really focused on, in my mind, you're really focused on ball fields because you think that can be a generating, activity, generating funds and that's great. I was part of the original group that started the Sopich softball with Gary McCone. It's taken time, that continues to go, thanked people like Kevin. And we never, I mean, when I was his employee, we never had a rain-out game and the city was not involved in the ball diamonds. It was Manny Boucher at the puller told us where we could go and we had volunteers that developed all the fields, did all of that with volunteers. And then eventually the city took over some of those, those ball diamonds, but that's, that's a lot of history. So it's going to take time and it's going, and I don't know where, I don't know how to answer your question on the fact that just you have to be patient and I, that's just the way it is.
Okay. But number one, I guess I, I'm getting frustrated because one, yes, I was, been talking about Malcolm Park, but my main number one goal as a Commissioner is parks and recs in general. And if I'm understanding correctly and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but we're kind of here to oversee Oliver and as far as how that goes, right? What he does?
Every aspect.
Right. So if I?
Set the policy.
Right. So if I, as a Commissioner, feel like our parks and rec and depart, department are not meeting the needs of our community and that I feel we could be doing better, no matter, depending on whatever, which way the Commission decides to go. The way I'm understanding you is that you're saying you're not into the day-to-day business, but yet isn't that part of the day-to-day business? You see what I'm, where I'm getting confused and trying to figure out?
You have to, I guess you have to accept when the commission decides the, the way we're going to set the policy and to determine the day-to-day operations of the city. He runs the city. He runs his employees. In my mind, we, we look at the big picture. Not only Parks and Rec, you look at, uh, police and fire, streets and roads. I mean, everybody, we, we don't have a utopia here where everybody has exactly what they need. So it's a matter of, it gets, it's frustrating to think that, um, some issues that, that you want to have, um, taken care of aren't, aren't being taken care of in your mind. But ultimately, we're moving, we've moved a long way from two years ago when, um, they should, I mean, already it's thirteen-four or something like that, I think, in the budget. We have two employees at the, so we're, we're getting there. It's just, it's gonna take time. So, and I, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time talking to you in the public about what, what we do as a commission. And that's, that's our business.
I'm just looking for clarification because I'm confused.
You might be confused. Again, it's gonna take, it's gonna take time because government, government is not easy. And when you deal with taxpayers' money, and you have to look at, um, established, uh, criteria that, that people have written down that says in a survey that this is where we want to spend funds. And we look at the administration to give us a guide as far as what they think is, is, is important issues in the, in the day-to-day operation of the city. And then we set the policies and give him the parameters to make it happen with his staff.
But...
Excuse me, what, what else can we talk about?
I, I just don't, if I, if I feel like there is something wrong with the way things are going, do I not? When is the opportunity to bring the, the fact that I think Parks and Rec should be totally revamped and redone to, you know?
Again, that's a, that's a big item. So if you're gonna bring that up, I would say you would want to talk to the city manager about that and how you, the, how you process that so that you can get enough votes in this commission to do that in another budget session. Because it's not gonna happen this budget session, as I, and I think, because we've already decided which way we're going.
But, but really, I'm not asking for money, though. I'm just asking for information.
No, no, you're asking for a process. And that process takes, in my mind, that process takes an awful lot of time when, when we've already established the certain things that he has to do. And, and I would think if, if we want to spend some time with our city manager, so maybe you can understand what government is. Because we're not the private business part where we can make just things happen because we want them to happen. And that, and I don't, and that's not a slam that, private business is great, and we can't do anything, we can't do anything without it. But it's different. Okay? Commissioner Miller.
The hour's getting late, so I'll, I'll, I'll make this quick. Commissioner Baker said she's only been here for a year. I've been here a lot less than that, but she's frustrated. She sounds like, she feels like she's not being heard, and whether or not she doesn't, maybe she doesn't agree with the process, or maybe we don't, some of us don't understand the process, whatever. Instead of just telling her it's gonna take time, does anyone have a, can someone give her some, what should she do? City manager? What should she do?
Yeah.
I mean, give her an avenue to, give her an avenue to go through so she doesn't, I mean, look how frustrated she looks. She shouldn't, she shouldn't be like that. She has some great ideas. But you are right, Your Honor. We have a process. We went through it already. Please, Commissioner Baker, I hope you understand that. The, the process has already gone through, but tell her what to do.
Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. Why doesn't, why don't you opt to do the, the commission training program that the MML offers? So that you can understand governance and, and really what the different departments are and how it ebbs and flows?
I will absolutely a hundred percent do that. But in my opinion, I, it doesn't make any sense to me that I can't come to the commission and say that I feel like our Parks and Rec department...
You can.
...is not being ran to the potential that it could be. And what can we do as a commission to help facilitate our Parks and Rec department to do the best job that they can do with the resources that they can do? What can we do to help them, and what can we do to make their process better?
And I would say you want to sit down with the city manager when he has time, so you can better understand it.
Understand what? The process or Parks and Rec? Because I've talked to him until I'm blue in the face about Parks and Rec.
Okay, so he's operating it for the city. If, if you're frustrated, I can't tell you anything other than you're gonna be frustrated because ultimately, we are going forward as a, as a commission with what we've decided to do. And, and you've got, and, Commissioner Baker, you have, you have some good ideas. It's gonna take time. And over time, that may be changed. Some of those that we, how we do things may change. But it's, it's gonna take time, and it's not gonna be, you know?
But again, I'm...
Again, we're gonna get out of here.
It's the last time. I, I'm sorry for trying to clarify. But again, I tried to talk about it at goal setting. I don't get enough time then. I tried to talk it at a commission meeting. I get cut off. So I'm asking...
You're getting all kinds of time. I mean, you had thirty-five or forty-five minutes.
I had, I had, I'm like...
But you're, you're getting frustrated because you don't, you don't get what you want at that point.
No, I am fine. I'm always fine with not getting what I want. That's not an issue. The issue is, I'm confused as to when the discussion can be had about the issue in front of us.
We've had some discussions.
And I don't feel like we had it at goal setting. I, I don't think we had it at budget, budget session. I feel like it was very fast and very quick, especially for the, as new as the commission that we have. And so I'm, yes, I am frustrated. But I, I mean, I, I totally understand the voting process.
Uh, we're gonna adjourn. Okay? Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion. We adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Okay. You have, you have a question?
I do too.
Okay. Oh, do you have, not concerning this?
Concerning that.
Well, um...
It's okay. You already made the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, 'cause it's getting late, and I think we, we've hashed this around, and I think individually, you can meet, you can meet individually with any, any of the Commissioners and, um, and the manager to go through this. I mean, okay? All in favor of, uh, adjourning? Say, if I can say, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.